States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the council from April 28.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
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 Five nothing on that.
It was just a little slow on the trigger there.
All right. Approval of the transcript from the public hearing on April 14.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, five nothing on that. Special reports, not seen anything, so we'll move into audience comments. This is an opportunity for any member of the audience to address counsel on a non-agenda item for up to five minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to address counsel? Mr. Brown.
Samuel, Samuel, do we have any feedback on the cell tower where we're headed on that?
Mr. Lowers, I heard, Mr. Smith, did you happen to contact?
I did. Tony, what's his last name?
Campanelli.
Campanelli, yeah. I spoke to him, Andrew. Very nice guy, very knowledgeable. We also spoke with our special counsel, Paul and I.
Mr. Co- the Cohen Group?
Yeah, before that, and so when I spoke to Andrew today, he does do somewhat what Mr. Cohen does, more on a national level in terms of drafting ordinances, but he does do exactly what Mr. Cohen does in terms, draws that line, Tony, where co-location begins and regular ordinance provision, where we can regulate where it goes versus co-location. So he recognizes that co-location is a problem. Now, he did say he'd have to reacquaint himself with Pennsylvania to see if we were 100% preempted, but he was more concerned about the state accepting and passing those types of laws on someone on the blind. He recognized what it does to local governments.
Right.
But, you know, that being said, what he said about passing ordinances was something I think we already have on the books in terms of regulating freestanding cell towers and where they go, the need, you know, looking at the need and the data, that's what he gets into. And I had a similar one with, I think it was Crown Castle applied in South Fayetteville when I was special counsel, and they did the same thing. They were going through that whole analysis as to whether the cell tower could really, wasn't really necessary in that particular area, because you have to prove that for the other Telecommunication Act. But co-location was its own animal, and he says it really rises and falls with Pennsylvania's law on preemption for co-locating. And he wasn't equating this to those five Gs that are up and down the street, he was talking about like something like UHAT. So he said, you know, and Cohen looked at it for us before this, and I didn't tell him what either one thought, and he came to the conclusion that he did last time, Paul, if I recall, that, yeah, this unfortunately likely, you know, preempted from the local government level in terms of having much oversight, other than trying to get them, like you had wanted to do, get them before this council, you know, have them answer questions, make them account for everything they're going to do, make sure they actually do it.
So on that note then, Mr. Holdren, you received an application. So what is the process then at that point? I know we published it, I know, I don't know why it's 300 feet. I thought we discussed that before. That's one thing I'd love to see expanded.
And it will be. One of the things that council has directed is that we have a public meeting for the purposes of discussing that. In our policy, when that occurs, we reach out to everyone within 600 feet of the property.
For the public meeting?
Yes.
I'm talking about the initial that went out because, like, if a man won't cover a fireside in Camel Lake, are they all standard that it's 300 feet? Because Mr. Coaster can see the cell tower from his place. So I think that there are different parameters here unless you're by law have to have a public notice, be the safe distance, no matter what the product is.
No public notice or public hearing is required by law, it's required by township policy, and that's what.
And do they all have to be the same now?
They can be whatever it is council would like us to do.
They can be different.
So I don't understand why we have a 300-foot on something that is clearly affecting a much longer distance. I think you can get on the internet and talk about the Wi-Fi transmission, but at least the visual transmission, I think should be beyond 300 by far.
Well, it'll be, it'll be 600 feet for the meeting.
That's for the public notice, that's not the initial.
So we, one of the things that the policy requires is that we send out notices of what's occurring to get public input, and then based upon that, because all this is in this particular case is the issuance of a building permit. So we think we can condition the building permit and where that public meeting may well result in additional conditions, these are the ones, at least initially, for this site that we think makes sense. And it's to get a certification that the, that it's, the tower's going to operate in compliance with the FCC, that require them to attend a pre-construction meeting with the township so that we can go over in detail exactly what their order of construction is.
Could we require them to attend a public meeting as well?
And that's what I was going to get to. So if I get to show through these, the creation of a temporary no parking zone, and rather than simply delineate something, my recommendation is that we actually create a temporary no parking zone, because that way it can be enforced by the police department, otherwise it's us going up and asking people to move. We can require them to post a bond to cover the restoration of the property, including the roadway and anything inside the right-ofways. We can require a traffic control, including a flagman, when the crane is in place and in operation, and then lighted barricades around the crane in 18 hours. There may well be other conditions that you may want to add to that, and I think that will come out of that public meeting. I've been in touch with AT&amp;T, I've offered them two dates to come to council for a meeting that would either be at our next meeting at council or the first one in June. They've yet to get back to me and tell me what their availability is.
You know, in that meeting, it may make sense to have a court reporter there to the extent where you can maybe have them get sworn in and hold them to anything they tell counsel.
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable.
So, let me clarify then, he received the application. Do you have any official timeframes that you're stuck to?
90 days.
That you have to stamp this by, unless?
90 days.
So is there ever situations where it extends beyond 90 days as in if you're talking to them?
I would imagine the only case that would happen is if they grant us an extension to that 90 days.
Oh, this 90-day on the building permit?
Yeah, and that's according to our policy.
From the day you received. Worst case, they have to, they probably have to.
Infringing regulation.
Because I think when you enter talks, Mr. Coaster talked about not only the parking situation when the crane's there, I would love to see it codified on projects like this, on how many vehicles you can have, how many employees you can have, where you, how many vehicles can be on-site, because it's not just when the crane's there. I can't pull out of my driveway, they're parked up over the hill, it's constant, and it's not just during install. Now we're going to have constant updates. I would also like, I don't know, Tom, if you got a check on the RF modulation. I think once you guys start talking to them, okay, we went from one to 12, now to 36, can you explain that to me? They may cut it back.
Well, and actually, in my discussions with the guy from AT&amp;T, and I'm not suggesting that he's committed to doing this, but his thought was that rather than run all those COAX cables up, that they would be running fiber optic, and, but he needs to go back to the construction people to talk to them about that.
Yeah, I don't know the official terminology. Whatever those cables are there now, they're tearing them out and replacing them with something else than adding 24 different ones. So I think when you have discussions with these people and you have concerns and you ask them about what that does to output, what that does to potential help from where we are now as a baseline, maybe they'll take it upon themselves to scale back. Maybe if we had, I'm not happy when I have a trailer on the street or am parked in and I have a police officer tell me, he can't write a ticket for this or that because it wasn't codified correctly, the parking signs or whatever. So based on the way that road is now, are they, by our laws, allowed to write tickets? And at some point, it could be nice. You just tag and tow.
That's my point, is that we're going to establish a no parking zone, and we're going to, going to do it by ordinance so that.
But not just by, not just when the crane's there?
When, well, the construction's occurring there, so that there will not be cars parked on the, on the peak of that hill, regardless of whether the crane's there or not. And in, by doing that, the police department then can enforce that and issue tickets or have them towed.
All right. Tom, did you get a chance to check into RF emissions and if any of this means anything to anybody?
I think that topic is so large and, you know, I don't think that we're going to come to a consensus on, you know, what radio frequencies mean.
So would you have a basis?
Well, no, and again, I don't want to mislead you, that, you know, if you look at the federal statute, the Telecommunication Act of 1996 clearly calls out that states and municipalities cannot regulate the output of these facilities.
I have a different approach, which is you're asking the questions. You're sitting with these guys who may want to put towers on your Phillyville border, who may want to do business with you. What I found is when you have dialogue with people from a business perspective that want to do business in this township, they may want to work with you more. So I didn't say regulate, but what I said is ask the question, what is your baseline right now, AT&amp;T, for your admittance? What is coming out of there? Where do you project it to be with your 36 new cables? You know, once you start asking those questions, I don't think they're going to add cables, maybe they'll reduce cables.
And I don't think the cables increase the amount of RF.
Yeah, those are.
But what the township can and will request is certification from AT&amp;T that they're operating within the guidelines of the FCC.
Right. All right, and Mr. Smith, did Mr. Campanelli, other than co-location, talk to you from the perspective of whether there's a lot of things we, for the, for the next situation, whether there's anything we could do or current ordinances to tighten them up?
Well, he, I don't know that he was really familiar, Tony, with our ordinance as they are now. Obviously, that's what he does, right? And I think Mr. Cohen does something comparable, and I'm not equating the two, I don't know, but he explained that's what he does. He gets involved with local communities to draft those ordinances as to whether there is the need and whether you meet the requirements for cell towers in and of themselves. And I get it, what he's looking for to strengthen municipality's hand if they want to deny it, that they're in good stead in denying it. So obviously, it exists, he's familiar with it. He hadn't, wasn't, again, overly reacquainted himself with Pennsylvania law, and I don't know that he's looked at Peters, maybe with you a year or so back.
He did a cursory exam of our ordinances at the beginning when I talked to him. I think the one other avenue which Ann might go, I believe a couple of you talked to Mr. Schumpf back in the day for First Energy, it's now on to another gentleman there who I've had conversations with, Mr. Greenwood is the local First Energy West Penn. I think he ought to be invited. They confirmed that they don't have to put one up. If AT&amp;T or Verizon or whoever, because I told him, I don't want a T-Mobile tower up there, and I can pull his name up for you.
John, pretty much.
Well, he's local, I'm talking about corporate that Greenwood reports to. They can, they can deny any of these. So he was of the impression, he was pulling the proposal, that he doesn't want any more up there. He matched me, and he confirmed, we can say no, because they get paid for this. So I think they're a little bit culpable too at some point. Thank you all.
Thanks, Tony.
Good evening. Okay, now, I'm not, I'm not here to complain, I'm here for information seeking, okay? I live at 123 Robin Hood Lane, so, you know, my electric was off for two days because of a tree going down and hitting wires. So I want to know, because the West Penn people did not come out, okay, right away, except to, I don't know if they can by computer turn the electricity off or what, because the end, at the end of the street, the wire was broken loose and it was setting the woman's yard on fire, okay? So they had to do something about that. Now, my question is, they, you know, and granted, I don't know if somebody was, were there longer times that the electricity was off in Peters Township, longer than two days?
Oh, yeah. Yes, there were.
So maybe, you know, they were busy doing that, and I have an appreciation for all that, okay? But when they did come up the street to fix, to work on the electricity, they were only down there, they said they were, this one young kid said they were there since 11, but I was home all day and I was watching, and I did not see them go down there at 11 o'clock, okay? They came up after, oh, I don't know, it looked like after they had eaten lunch or something, so they, I saw three trucks come up, they went down because a Xfinity truck came up the hill, because they were down there fixing air wires. But my question is, is there any coordination that we could have with West Penn about when trees fall on lines like that with the tree cutting? Because that was the problem. They said that's what held things up, was it wasn't their fault that the tree cutters didn't come out until the night before. And the young kid got really smart with me, you know, which I'll take up with West Penn, but.
But to answer the question, when a tree comes down and wires are entangled on it, that is something beyond which the Public Works Department can do. In fact, West Penn Power's direction is to everyone is to stay away from that until they have a chance to find out whether the lines are still energized. You know, from, from my perspective, West Penn Power's response to this, this situation was, was amazing. You know, they, they had 18,000 separate incidents where you have a pole down, a transformer down, they had 5,000 people in this area working from 18 different power companies outside the state. And so, and the impact in Peters Township, that storm hit in such a way that there was a lot of impact, and I think West Penn Power really did a yeoman's job in terms of getting things back up and running, so.
Well, my question was that, you know, does the township ever help? Because I heard the township was out helping to cut trees.
We cut, we cut trees that fall down.
During that incident?
Yeah, well, we, and, and again, I give a lot of credit to the Public Works Department, they were out and worked through the night. They will cut and remove trees that are sitting on roads, that are blocking roads but are not entangled in, in the power lines. Once you have the power lines entangled in them, that's something they can't touch.
What this tree did is it came down on the power line, it was a big branch of a tree, it wasn't a tree, it was a big branch of a tree, and it was resting on the power lines. But they must have turned them off because they knew that it was burning the woman's lawn, okay? So I don't, I do not believe those wires were live because.
But there's no way to know that without getting, getting involved in those wires, and our Public Works employees are not equipped to deal with that kind of thing, so.
Okay, because, I mean, the tree cutting people didn't come until Wednesday, the day before, you know.
Power came back on Thursday.
Yeah, power came back on.
About six, five o'clock maybe?
No, quarter to six, okay? So, because it went off about quarter to six on Tuesday, came on quarter to six on Tuesday, or Thursday. So, okay, well, that answers that question. I just wanted to know, because if we could work with West Penn somehow to come and help cut the trees, because they were making it sound like, well, we couldn't do anything because nobody was here to cut the tree. We can't help it, they didn't come cut the tree till last night, you know? And that's the smart answer I got from that young kid, so.
Well, they might contract with another company.
Well, I think they do.
Yeah, I'm sure that's.
It was some, yeah, no, West Penn doesn't cut, yeah, they contract with people because they said, and I saw the truck of the two men, I think, that went down to cut the tree.
That's who they contracted.
Yeah, what were they called?
Asplant, or white trucks, black others.
No, I didn't see any Asplant trucks there. They, they, these guys were in a red truck and it said, "Emergency Responders" or something like that, and then next thing I knew, the tree's gone, so I don't know. They were down there cutting the tree, so.
Well, you weren't alone, we were without power too, so.
Yeah, I know, wasn't, yeah, I mean, well, the reason why I'm concerned is because when the power did, I have no furnace now, it blew out my control panel, okay? So now I have to buy new furnace, but I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other audience comments? Okay, seeing none, looks like there's a little unfinished business, and we'll move into new business. First will be an appointment of two members of Peters Township.
Once again, I was overly impressed with the applicants we had, it's always difficult to make a choice, but I'll make a motion that we appoint Courtland Smalls-Ride to the term ending on January 1st, 2027, and that we appoint George Leotis for the term ending on January 1st, 2028.
Second. Okay, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, so it's five nothing. Next honorable item will be a special permit for a grand opening celebration for Castle Rock Hormone Health located at 39 Post 6 Washington Road.
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you for having me and my partner, this is Cam Rousley. My name is Mark Campoya. I just opened up, we just opened up a hormone health clinic at 3906 Washington Road, right between the BP and Howard Hannah, across the street from the Giant.
The old Goldberg Insurance Building.
That's exactly what it was. We're lucky to get it, I mean, he said, I talked to Bill and he said, this thing's been open for years and no one's came by and bothered knocking on the door because they didn't have to sign it, but we're happy to get it. We're happy to be in your community, it's been wonderful to us, everybody from the city to everybody that's come in, and we could use a few more customers than you guys are, because we're all in our venue. We want to apply for a special events permit, we want to have a grand opening on June 21st, 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock. We want to invite the public, we, we're going to have some fun stuff for the public. We, the only two people we've contracted, kind of, because we didn't get the permit yet, but we wanted to make sure that these people were available to us, we got a podcaster that is in Pittsburgh, the Pittsburgh area, and, around here actually, and she's national too. She was kind enough to do a podcast for us. We're also going to have the Washington Wild Thing mascot coming, those are the only two that we've signed. What we, what we hope to bring in is, we've talked to the Red Cross for a blood drive and a pet adoption, just so, I've done it before and it's fun, kids, you know, come up, play with the dogs, try and get them adopted. I've talked to the local band, high school bandleader, trying to get the marching band out there to play a little bit. He said he'd look into it, he wasn't sure because he didn't know how many people would still be in the area because it's kind of summer, but he said he'd try. I've got balloon guys that do animals with balloons, face painters, let's see, we, we were hoping to get the fire truck down there, because I think kids love fire trucks, so.
Tell us a little bit about your business.
It's a hormone health clinic, we do peptides, we do testosterone, we do that sort of, that sort of thing. We're not, we, we don't cure anybody, we optimize their health. We have a lot of people that come in with pain, or they, they fall asleep. I'm, I'm one of those guys that, 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 I always thought, I'm, I'm fine, you know, I do my 10 hours of work, come home, make my dinner, and I'd be asleep in front of the news by the time I was eating the end of my dinner, and be asleep by 7:30, and you're not supposed to do that, you're supposed to be able to get like out till 10, 11, 11 o'clock, and, and so I, I, I was one of those guys that is totally skeptical, I'm totally skeptical. I just don't think things work, I don't, I just don't. And, and a buddy talked me into it, and a doctor made me feel silly for not doing it when he said, hey, you're in great health, you're not supposed to fall asleep at 6:00. And so, so I went out and I, he said, he, he kind of strong-armed me about getting some testosterone, I took it, three weeks later, I, I mean, I felt like a kid, I was, I was like working all day long, looking for more things to do at 10 o'clock, it was, it was fantastic, I had the energy, all kinds of, you know, I got half my day back, you know?
So you're a dispensary, or you have a physician on staff?
We do have a physician on staff, we have two nurses, we have providers.
Okay, so I'm just exploring.
Absolutely.
I'm clueless, all right?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I get it, we're not, we're not, we're not healing, you know, sickness, we're, we're trying to optimize people's lives, and that's what it does, it just gives you more time in your day, you feel stronger.
My only concern would be very limited parking, if I remember the site.
There's a, there's.
Put a fire truck in the middle of that parking lot, where are we going to put all the other people?
Well, and normally our fire trucks do not participate in these kind of activities.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, police cars, police, any kind of, kids just love that kind of stuff, I just, I mean, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, that kind of stuff that, you know, I'll ask, but even having a police chief there in full gear and he's shaking hands, taking pictures with kids, hoping to get the.
Oh, he's right there in the back of the room, you can ask him right now.
Get the mayor there and have them.
Not put you on the spot, chief.
I don't even know who the mayor is.
There is a mayor, we have no mayor.
There's no mayor, well, I'm just hoping to get people there to talk to other people. I'm going to have, I'm going to put up a tent so people can find out about what we do.
So you want, you say you want the permit from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM?
Yeah.
Because it says 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM here on our.
Is that a Saturday?
It's a Saturday. It's a Saturday. It's a Saturday, 21st of June.
First day of summer.
No, it's, it's 10 to 3, wait a minute.
I don't have any reservations, do you want to make a motion?
Go ahead, Tom.
I move that we approve the request for a special permit.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate your time.
Good luck here, man.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move into item C, resolution amending the Peters Township Police Manual. Looks like these are just policies to keep us up to date with our accreditation.
Yes, for the most part, they're not substantive changes in the policies.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 05-01-25, amending the Peters Township Police Manual.
Okay, motion is second on that, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Five, nothing. Next, we're going to look at a resolution amending the employee handbook model, finding a job description for social services coordinator.
And we made one additional change to that job description, we, and we put that up on your desk with regard to the qualifications, but basically what this does is, one, put a requirement that the person live with the same distance as, as a police officer would, because this individual needs to be able to respond in emergencies. The other thing is we, we discovered that the licensing for a forensic social worker, the underlying certification has to be for a social worker, so it, it makes that change as well.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 05-02-25, amending the Peters Township Employee Handbook.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Five, nothing.
Well, when's this, when, when are we starting this permit?
We went through one cycle of hiring, of, we were able to find a suitable candidate, so we're back out advertising right now, and that's why this change is occurring.
Did you get a lot of applicants that didn't?
We, how many applicants total?
Qualified?
Yeah. We had four qualified applicants.
You guys interviewed all four and just?
And there was, we could talk. And there was, we could talk about that executive session afterwards because there was a problem in that process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item will be award of a contract for the 2025 Ru- Road Rejuvenator Project. Looks like we have one bidder on this, same group as every year and it was under budget.
Yeah, and, and the price has only gone up of less than 1% from last year. So it's my recommendation, we award a unit price contract to pavement pub technology incorporated for $175,191.80.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's five, nothing. Item F, award of a contract under Co-Stars for, for only Billings Park Aquatics Center.
It's for equipment, computer equipment. The operation requires an extension of our computer network, including equipment to facilitate a point of sales transaction as well as telephones. The equipment is being proposed to be purchased under Co-Stars for a total cost of $27,741.09. This is being funded in total by the Washington County Local Sheriff Council. So it's my recommendation that we award a Co-Stars contract to AEC Group in the amount of $27,741.09.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any other discussion on that?
Was this in the budget?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five, nothing. Final item under new business will be a, an award of a contract under Co-Stars for the installation of flooring at the municipal building.
So the 2025 budget has an appropriation of $100,000 for improvements to the municipal building. The hallway carpeting and stairway flooring are worn and stained. The, the hallway carpet's over 10 years old. The flooring in the stairwells is over 25 years old. So that what we're proposing is to replace all of that for $44,922.88. Who we are recommending to use is Steinberger floors. We've used them on a number of projects, including the library and the rec center. They're pleased with their, their work.
Is there additional flooring that's going to be coming up as well? Or are we just going to sit 50 plus thousand hundred budget? Is that up?
Well, there's additional projects that we, we want to look at. So for instance.
Okay, so this wasn't the only one?
This isn't the only one. This is the version.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we award a contract of Sternberger floors under the Co-Stars program to provide and install flooring in the municipal building in the amount of $44,922.88.
Done.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I recuse myself.
401, payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I move they be approved and submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have nothing on payroll and bills. Correspondence, we have notification of an EQT wall pad on Finleyville, our Rammer Road, and sent a letter from Rachel Duda of Pendott.
Yes, when, when Pendott informed us that they were postponing the paving of the road for a year because of the work from Columbia Gas, we sent them a letter saying, hey, the section of, of, one section of the road is in bad shape. It really needs to be overlaid. Their response was that they will be doing patching. They've been doing this, that patching over the last couple of days. And I'm not sure that it isn't worse than the.
Yeah, I don't know that's an improvement, so.
Yeah.
I, I don't understand why they don't know ahead of time, before they tell us they're going to do this. They haven't checked with Columbia Gas?
Well, this doesn't surprise me with regard to the utilities. I mean, we have the same problem with coordinating. We do our best, but that doesn't necessarily mean that each of the utilities.
But here's my understanding, Columbia Gas isn't going to be working in that area, right?
Yes, they are. They're going to be working from the county line out to Pleasant Street, and they're going to be putting gas lines in the center of the road the whole way down.
Didn't they already do some work on that stretch?
Yes.
A couple of years ago?
I just thought you went the, the permit out there is for.
Because I thought they went all the way. They went down to Lutheran Church last time, didn't they?
I represented the, the guy that used to own that Umum Pizza building, yes?
Yeah.
And, and we sold them right away so they could move the old line into the new line. And that was, he's been, he passed away several years ago.
It was like about two or three years ago they were.
And they ran it all the way up to, you know where Goosebumps is and all that? Like that, whatever that road is on. They went all the way up there.
Yeah, this is Allegheny County Line, down to Pleasant Streets is what we're being told.
So they're going, so they're going from the county down, down to Pleasant Avenue.
That's, that's what we've been told. And it's going to take two years to complete the project.
So, so they're going to be working next summer too?
They're going to be working, I, at least part of next year, yes.
So in reality, Pendott's not going to repave it until 2027.
Oh, I, I can't imagine that.
I mean, it's bad.
I mean, yeah, it's like when you come past the Chrysler dealer, you got to go in, if you're heading, if you're heading north on 19, you've got to go into the center lane. You know, it's like driving school all over again, trying to avoid the cones and as you.
All right, minutes. Does anybody want to talk about anything on the minutes?
Yes. Minutes? No, miscellaneous, all right.
All right. Nobody, anybody?
No.
Takeers?
Miscellaneous?
Paul?
I, I have a number of things with regard to the zoning hearing board.
Bingo.
One of the things I put on your, your desk is a portion of the transcript from the last hearing and.
Yeah, I was reading that. So is this the zoning board's position now that if any of us on this panel are aggrieved by an, or feel that the zoning hearing board should not grant a request for relief, that we need to appear there personally to put our two cents in?
Which you can't. That's what you can't.
Right, right.
I'm trying to explain.
I mean, we could go as individual residents, but I couldn't go as a, I couldn't say that as a member of council, I feel that this is inappropriate.
Not even if you had a form of conscience sitting there, you all couldn't get together to vote and say that's object. You know, you're doing it the correct way.
So I just, based upon her, Ms. Clark's request that we convey this to council, I'm conveying it to council.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
The other thing is that I provided you, they passed a resolution that allows for remote attendance. And both Mr. Smith and I think this is problematic. I mean, like for instance, you have a five-member board, so you need three members to have a quorum. So if, if you had two people that attended remotely and that's what creates the quorum, the alternate who's sitting here and sees all the evidence and hears all the witnesses would not be permitted to vote. Because the quorum will consist of the two remote people and the person, the other person that's here in person. It doesn't make sense.
Why can't they hear the other people there?
The, the alternate can only vote.
If there's not a quorum.
If there's not a quorum. If there is a quorum and they're saying by their rules, a quorum consists of one person in attendance and two people not in attendance, the alternate sits there, hears the case and doesn't vote. It doesn't make sense.
The one thing is, why aren't the people listening remotely? Why aren't they hearing the case?
Well, they're hearing the case, but they're not seeing the evidence, right? Because the evidence.
Why can't they see the evidence?
Well, for, for instance, Tom, at the last meeting, you know, either the applicant or objector came in with a pile of documents.
Okay.
Somebody on the phone isn't going to hear. Even somebody remotely on by Zoom can't see the documents.
So that's what I was thinking, like on Zoom, you could project the.
Right. You're saying that's not the case. And we explained to them that the council's not authorized some tech people to be here to facilitate that activity. It'd have to be able to see them.
Right.
It can't just be by phone because how are you going to assess demeanor and credibility without looking at their body language and their facial expressions? That's what I raised. There, when people forget, they're a quasi judicial board. I know this. Do they, I know they have the, do they have the authority to do that? To set that, they say they have the authority to set their standards, but I questioned the due process part of it as to whether, who's going to judge a credibility when, you know, this camera's over here and someone's speaking over there, you know, they're not going to see them. I don't think it's the due process issue.
But I think they're just a very practical thing. You have five members on that board and you have an alternate.
They all need to be there.
Only 50% of them have to show up to hold a hearing. Why would you have somebody participate remotely?
Well, let me ask you a question. Let's assume that they can do that, right? Is there any requirement that we pay that the township has to provide Zoom and team and cameras and all the other, and the, and the TV sets and all that stuff? I haven't read. Do we have to fund it? I haven't read the record, but I know I argued against that on the rec. I thought I argued against that.
We, we actually, John and I actually sat down with a solicitor and explained to them that, that the township was not in a position to be able to be doing this, particularly when you read the rules. If you can call within two hours of the meeting and ask to be, to be participating remotely, we can't do that kind of thing with two hours notice. It doesn't make sense.
I don't think this is a good idea.
Well, and the other issue is what if, you know, one month I come in and I'm applying for variance and the board that hears my application consists of three members who are here too remotely. The next month, Gary comes in with a variance application and it's two different people who are, who are remote and, you know.
There's no consistency.
There's no consistency. And, and I don't get my variance, but Gary gets his just because the person who's watching at home didn't get to see my evidence. You know what I mean? So don't I, am I not then agree? Because I've not been, I've not had the same standard of review as Gary did.
Well, and in, in my opinion, for what it's worth, when you look at what happened last year where you had members that were missing more than 50% of the meetings, I don't think, I think it's difficult to have consistency because the board keeps changing who's actually hearing these cases, so.
Do we know if other communities have remote access for zoning?
I've not seen it anywhere. Because I think they are, as Frank knows, they're judging credibility as part of their job and it's really hard to do it. What if they freeze even for 20 seconds? They can't see it. Just that in and of itself could trigger some overturn by court that you didn't get due process. I had one case like this, not exactly, but the applicant was allowed during COVID to come to the meeting, but the objectors were by Zoom. And the applicant, it was for asphalt, and they're having the board smell their asphalt. Everyone at home's going, how the hell do we do that? You know, because we can't participate fully in the court. I didn't even get it out of my mouth and the judge at the hearing reversed it without argument. He's like, reverse due process violation, going back down. So.
What can we do to replace this group?
Well, I mean, the statute, it's, it's tough to replace them, right? You, you appoint them, they are an independent body. There are mechanisms in there, I think, that we visited for violating our rules of attendance, but that we didn't even really have to set rules at that time.
I mean, I, I served on that board for a number of years and this is just absolute bizarre behavior compared to the standards that were set when I was on the board.
And they said this was in response to council saying that they had to, you know, about potentially removing them for not showing up. One thing I give. That wasn't the point of that. And it wasn't aimed at that. We did a crossover. Any, any one of the, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, the reason that we made inquiry because just like any other board that we have, if somebody's not attending, we always ask because there could, they could have moved, they could be ill, they, you know? And there's, that's why we do that. It has nothing to do with trying to remove them.
Well, and in point of fact, there were three boards, zoning hearing board being one of them, there were two other boards with people who had attendance problems. And when I spoke to them and, and talked to the, to them, in those cases, both of those people resigned because they, they knew going forward, they couldn't improve their, their situation because of what was happening in their lives, but.
I, I don't know that they're anticipating employing this, this new policy.
Oh, come on.
They haven't so far this year, although it was at the last meeting, the meeting before they enacted it, I can't remember.
That was the last meeting.
But. I, I think that if they intend to do this, that we should be ready to follow an equity action and the court will call the police to join them for doing that based on perceived due process violations. Yeah, that's the concern, the citizens don't get their full. Because otherwise, we're going to, you know, we're going to have to appeal every one of them or somebody's going to appeal it saying, I had a big stack of information and they didn't, how, they didn't see it. Yeah, and we really could be on the side of the zoning board. In fact, they vote in favor where township, you know, wants the same result, but gets overturned because of due process.
Right.
Of course, the question becomes, can you challenge it before somebody's agreed? Is there a ripeness issue? Because, I mean, the anticipating that it can be a problem is inactionable. Do we have to wait until the first time somebody comes in and complains and says, you know, they turned my application down because three people were watching from home and they didn't get to see the? Or if I'm an objector and like, as I said at the last meeting, some, an objector brings in a stack of documents this thick and the three people who are watching at home don't see it, you know, I'm an objector, I'm filing an appeal and saying, what the hell? You got, you know, five people on this board, only two of them saw the evidence I brought in.
It's going to get challenged if somebody does.
And that's my point. I think, I think it has to get to that point. I don't think you can do an anticipatory challenge anyway.
I think unless we knew well in advance, you could try, you know, but two hours, obviously, we wouldn't have an ad.
But I think that township itself could bring the action because we're party to the proceedings.
Oh, I don't think there's any question you could bring.
It just went.
Yes, went, yes.
I don't think you could bring it before, you know, that situation came to pass.
Moving on.
There's no action that's based on all of this dialogue.
I don't think so.
All right. You want to overthrow the whole board, Mr. Lewis?
They deserve it.
Want to storm the best deal?
How long do they serve their terms? How long are they?
They're all four years, but they're staggered.
Yeah. So just to bring you up to date, do you want to talk about this? This is the appeal that's down in county court.
This is the.
This is, this is the variance that the township joined the property owner.
For the wine bar.
To grant it. Mr. Smith has appeared in court over this. The zoning hearing board has failed to file the record, nor did their solicitors show up for the hearing. So I don't know what the status of this is at this point.
You'd have to educate me. I don't know what, what the issue is.
Mark, do you want to explain that?
This, this is the property where, right next to Med Express where they want to do a wine bar.
Right.
So they had filed for a variance and they were denied. If they were to have to build in accordance with our ordinance, the, the structure would have to be built in the flood plain. And so.
Okay.
This was one where council agreed that a variance should be granted and the zoning hearing board decided not to. And so we're in court with the property owner seeking to have the decision of the zoning hearing board overturned.
Thank you.
And we can't finish it because there's, that record hasn't been filed.
Yeah, what was, what was odd is that when we went to arguments, Judge Lucas said there's no record. I'm going to hear the argument. He heard the argument, zoning, Mr. Longich wasn't, couldn't attend. So only us and the applicant argued. As Paul indicated, it's in the floodway, so you need a variance. No matter what you do, you need a variance. They were looking at, questioning how much variance, but there was the record, or the findings don't really get into it. And I'm not sure that the record is. So the judge entered an order saying, once the record is lodged, the parties have 14 days if they want to amend their briefs. And I looked today, I still didn't see the record down there.
Well, who has it?
I don't know. I mean, I-
Well, it's been forwarded on. I don't know. Mr. Longich has to file it.
Yeah, since it's not my board, I can't, I can't lodge the record.
No, I know that.
So we did reach out to Tom today and to, between Jim and Tom, as to see, Jim can't file it either. I mean, the council can't file it. So hopefully that'll get resolved. He's going to probably make a decision.
So what's coming up on the next zoning hearing board meeting is a request for a variance based upon lot coverage. So they want to build an addition onto their deck, and it would take them up to 19.9%, I think, coverage. 15 is permitted. The other thing, when I look at this drawing, it looks as though they're also-
In the setback.
In the setback as well. So but I don't know that that's the basis of why we say file it.
The big thing was the the lot coverage.
Yeah. But both of them, both of them would be big things if you were over the setback line.
Yes.
So anyhow, do you want the township solicitor to make an appearance?
Yes.
He's going to be there anyhow, because I think the the-
That's the billboard, that name?
The billboard.
What's behind that there?
It's, there's, it's a wooded section, and there's homes up on the back end of it.
That seems like a big, a big variance, right? I mean, four, five, it's almost 5%.
Yeah.
You've already got a 4, 4,500 square foot house, right?
Yep.
What's your thing in gray? I can't read.
It's the existing deck.
And what's the pink?
The roof.
Proposed deck.
It's a what?
Proposed deck.
And I think it has a roof over it.
It does.
Mark, was it existing coverage? Does it meet the ordinance?
No, it doesn't. Existing, it's close to being even over the coverage as it is.
Why do they need that, though? Why don't they just put the, you know, for the-
Are they going to put, are they planning to put a roof over the existing deck, too? Yes, over everything. And that deck'd be like the size, 50% the size of the house.
Man, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, they don't need that. Well, what they're complaining about is the topography of the yard just doesn't lend itself to having a nice, flat, usable area. So they're thinking this is their outdoor space.
Well, I don't know. I can't tell from this whether that's true or not. I mean, if it had existed, that-
I'll tell you what, if the standard is going to be that my backyard's not being flat is a hardship, then 98% of the residents of this township have a hardship.
Yeah. Well, under miscellaneous, I know we sent this out to everyone, but Phase Two of the intersection project's going to start on May 27. And so that section of Bevout Road will be closed. And what's a misnomer, when I sent you out that notice, Phase Two ends on July 7. This closure continues into Phase Three. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So how long do they figure this will be closed?
September 1.
At school.
Man, that's going to be tough.
So essentially, Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Yeah. Well, and with Phase Three, East of Murray will also close. The entire intersection closes with Phase Three, which is July 14.
Oh.
So July 14 to September 1, complete closure of the intersection.
So there'll be no transverse, north-south travel on the Murray Road?
That's all, it'll all be on 19. That's the, that's the problem.
Well, unless you know the shortcuts and go down Brooklyn, go that way around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For fresh, how many left turning lanes are going to be in this intersection?
I think one each way. There's one each way, yes. Coming north and going south. And then this also, coming up on Bevout, you now have that, that, that lane with that slip lane there, so you'd be able to get up on that road easily.
Yeah.
It will be a major improvement to the intersection.
There's no question about that. It's just going to be-
So when is the whole thing done, then? Done, done? They're saying like November-ish. Okay.
Good. So wait, I have a question. Did we decide what we're going to do on this lot coverage, or we could have-
I think we agreed we're going to-
We agree we're going to have, okay, thank you.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
You know what, that's probably the-
I'll make a motion that we oppose the variance application.
So, y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Five, nothing. Anything else under zoning hearing board? We got everything there?
Yep.
Do we need to get into cell towers? We pretty much cover everything during the public domain.
No, I think there's nothing else there. You know, a question I do have for you, and and it's not that we have a date, but they are making progress on the study for the ambulance service. Is that one where you want to have a discussion with them in a workshop meeting? I think that might make more sense than trying to do that at a council meeting.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That's a whole night event.
Yeah.
Anything for next agenda?
I just, Paul, I just wanted to follow up with you about that zoning thing we talked about and these potential distribution centers of marijuana that now that the state's considering legalizing them. And I wanted, did you, did you look at that at all?
I looked at the piece of legislation. I don't know that it's it's passed one house, but I don't know that it's going to pass the other house. But if it does, what they're talking about is having licensed dispensaries like state stores. And if that's the case, then we need to determine where in Peters Township we are comfortable with that because-
The state's not proposed to run them, or they-
No, I think what they're proposing to do is to sell licenses to people.
Because I don't certainly, I don't completely believe that. You know, these dispensaries are, you know, sort of aired out, obviously.